And just like that, we're back home. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hey y'all, welcome or welcome back to my channel. If you're new here, my name is Rancy. Make sure you like, comment and subscribe. You're gonna love it here. But yeah, y'all, we have a new weekly vlog. I always feel like I'll go and I'll vlog, I'll upload a vlog and it'd be two weeks. I'm trying to be more consistent. I really wanna try to do this weekly thing. I really wanna try to do this weekly thing, like stay on top of it. But my last vlog, if you haven't seen that one already, was my finals week vlog. We passed yet another semester of nursing school. And now we are here on Cinco de Mayo, back home, which is the start of the new semester. So yeah, y'all, new semester starts this week, starts today, but starts this new week. And I kinda wanna start getting organized. Y'all know I take like a day or so, like when I first start in the semester, and I write down like all my assignments and everything like that. So I actually do wanna do that today. I already started working on like all my assignments that I do this week because why did I have eight things on my to-do list? It's only the first day, calm down. But yeah, y'all, got a lot of work to do. So I wanna get organized with that. And we also have our public health clinical that we'll be going to on Wednesday and Thursday, a back-to-back. Yes, we are going to be, I think it's like, I think I'm working with pre-K through 5th grade. That's what the emails say, pre-K through 5th grade. Um, but I won't be doing like any med passes or anything like that. So we'll see what, you know, it gives. We'll see. We'll see what we're doing. And then obviously I have preceptorship. I'm on a med search floor and nothing exciting. And obviously y'all know, I can't really record or show y'all a whole lot of stuff anyway. So yeah, we'll see how this week goes. But I wanna start my preceptorship this weekend. My nurse that I'm shadowing works on Saturday and Sunday. So I think I'm gonna just go in for a shift. And I know it's like, oh, it's the weekend. I don't really have nothing to do. So let's get these shifts over with. It's already free labor. Let's, let's get the ball rolling on that, okay? Cause we have to do 10, we have to complete 126 hours. Yeah, yeah. So yeah, the earlier the better. I wanna get started on that this weekend. So we'll probably end up doing that, have clinical and get ourselves together and work on these assignments. But I wanted to actually introduce the vlog. I am going to, I recorded a little bit during break. I'll show you guys. We went and saw centers. I went out with my friends. If I give y'all a short little recap in this video, I won't make it long. But yeah, starting now. Hey y'all, it is the next day. And yeah, y'all seen me without last night. We was having a time, a time was had. Yeah, but it's the next day and we are continuing the weekend festivities. We are actually headed to the movie theaters because we're about to go see centers. Everybody's been hooting and raving about centers. So we're finally about to go see it, which I'm so excited. And y'all gonna see when we get there. We got the whole theater to ourselves. So this is gonna be so cool to just be able to watch it on a big screen by ourselves, like in a theater. We have our own theater. It's so cool. So that's where we're headed to now. I will see you guys when we get there. Whole theater to ourselves. So dark. But we are here. We made it in the theater, y'all. We're the only people in here, obviously. Behind us, dead front in the center. Lady, we got our Ices popcorn and some nachos. Let's watch the movie. Are you trying to be stingy with the, god dang, this is loud. Be stingy with the nachos, y'all. But this is like really loud and I'm not gonna lie to you. Focus my face. Speaking of speaking.
Find a peaceful setting and close your eyes. Nathing out from your chest. Take a deep breath in. It can pierce the veil between life and death.
Alright y'all, we're done with the movies and we're up at spy. Looking at Apple Watches. I do want one for clinical. Y'all know we just passed another semester. Fourth semester senior right here, okay? We're good. So I was looking at this kind. This one is the Watch, Apple Watch SE second generation. I really just want like the most basic one. Do everything. We secured the Apple Watch, y'all. Alright y'all, we secured the Apple Watch. Let's see. It should be the right one. Yep. I got the Apple Watch SE second generation. It's in the 40mm Starlight. Should I open it now? Boxing. So funny how this comes. This is the band. This is in the Starlight color. This is the sports band. And voila, here she is. So funny how it comes separate like this. So yeah, I'm gonna put this together when we get home, but yeah, we got it. Yeah, so we had a little time. I did not record while I was like on my little week break because I really just wanted a minute to myself and not have to worry about vlogging. But we're back, new semester, new vlogs are coming. Final semester, y'all. Let's do this. Let's do this, okay? So yeah, I was probably talk to you guys tomorrow. I'm about to chill and write down some of my assignments. Hey girl, hey, it is the next day. And yes, if you can hear, that's my blinker on. But it is raining and it's a very cloudy day. But happy Tuesday. I wanted to check in with you guys because I just went to the hospital where I will be doing my preceptorship and I got my badge. Yeah, so that's what we just did. Now I'm about to stop by the grocery store because I need groceries. Sorry, I was driving. So back to what I was saying. I need to stop at the grocery store because I don't have any groceries in my house. And like I said, I'm starting clinical. I have clinical tomorrow. Um, which is my public health clinical. And I'm at a school, so I don't really know how it like works with like lunches and stuff like that. But I'm gonna bring myself something. Plus I need to eat tonight. And then like I said, I have that 12-hour shift on Saturday and Sunday. So obviously I need food, lunch for that. Um, I didn't really go do a tour of the hotel, uh, the hotel. I didn't go do a tour of the hospital. Like I could've really just, just walked up in there and like, you know, got a feel, got to see what's going on. But I'm not gonna do that. I'm just gonna leave that for Saturday in case like the nurse that I'm precepting like wants to show me around or show me how to get places. I don't know. Um, but yeah, we're about to head into this grocery store. I'm mad I didn't bring my like bags with me. So I'm not gonna get a lot of stuff because uh, like here, they only have paper bags and I don't wanna be carrying a bunch of paper bags. I could've went to Shaw's instead of Stop &amp; Shop because they have the plastic ba- bags. But, excuse me. But we're just gonna go in here and see what we can find. Going to the store. And I'm trying to see what I'm gonna get, honestly, because I didn't make no list. So this is the place. Got it. Actually, I'm looking for a sub. May 13th, 15th. Corn tortillas. I'm back, gonna try it. How do you be watching this? I got them, girl. I'm gonna try them. Chicken is not giving. Chicken is looking very much empty. Let's see. When does this expire? May 11th. If that works. Get me some snacks. Maybe I can get me some goldfish. Goldfish aren't too crazy. Some goldfishes. Yeah, I think I don't want anything else. Like I don't want no Oreos. Like I'm really trying to be slim because we have this trip coming up. It's flu season. I'm not gonna be looking like a big guy, okay? Hey girl, hey, it's a lot while later, but I put my groceries away. Like that was literally like two hours ago, maybe at this point. But we are back home because I had to go print out this log. Let me make sure this doesn't say too much. But we have this log that we have to bring with us to our public health clinical. So I had to go to Staples to print that out because I don't have a printer. So I was like, oh, this is the perfect time to pack my clinical bag with me and to show you guys what I keep in my clinical bag because I've never done that in any of our videos. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna take this folder. Right now I only have that log, but if my instructor gives us something else, then I will, um, put it in here. So we're gonna put this in here. I also keep this handy dandy flip-over nursing edition clipboard. So when I'm writing at clinical, if I need to, I'm able to have like a flat surface that I can write on. I think I have some stuff in here. I do. Um, so yeah, it's like the three, I literally have influenced so many of my peers to get this. You know, she's an influencer girl. She's an influencer. But yeah, I always have this at clinical and everybody asks me where I get it from. I got it from Amazon. It's linked in my Amazon storefront. So make sure you check that out if you haven't already. But yeah, I use this if I need to write down any notes, any patient information, et cetera. And then it has like a cute little cheat sheet on here for like everything you need to know. So I'm going to take that with me because I always do. I knew I put that the wrong way. Always take this. I have this in here. I also have my handy dandy stethoscope case and this is obviously where I keep my stethoscope. But I need to organize this. My pen lights need new batteries. I need to get, oh, this one's okay. Okay, this one needs a new battery though. But yeah, I have these pencil pen lights. Got these also are linked in my Amazon storefront, Trauma Tears. Got those. Um, so I put this on the side of my stethoscope pouch. And then obviously I have my stethoscope. It's a Littman, all black. Yeah. So. Some people say you don't need this. Oh, things you don't need or do need in nursing school, but I think it keeps me organized. So I obviously keep this in here and bring it with me to every clinical site. So I keep this in my bag. And then I also have a pencil pouch. So in here, I have a bunch of highlighters. I have a touch lint hand sanitizer. I have some hand cream, pencils and Kleenex. So I'm actually typically in the front of this bag is where I keep like my lip glosses, but usually my lip gloss is like on me at all times. So I originally had these mini Summer Friday ones, which I love. I might keep one of these in here still because I switch up my lip products so much. But yeah, the full size. I was gonna put that in there, but I think I'm just gonna keep this original one in there. I'm gonna put this one in here because I love a little pinky. Have it on right now. Yeah, pretty sheer. But um, yeah, I would put like my lip glosses and stuff in here, but I really just keep all my pens, pencils, stuff like that in here because um, I'm not gonna be digging up in here to get my lip gloss, okay? Okay. So that's what's in there. Then I have my manual blood pressure cuff. Need this, um, because some instructors want you to take manual blood pressures. I prefer not to, but it's definitely a skill that you need to know. Um, additionally, that's really all that I have in here. I'm gonna put a claw clip in my bag. I'm gonna put it inserted in this pocket. In the back, I also have this little pouch. So sometimes I just throw stuff in here. I'll give it to busy clinical day. Y'all seen I have a Apple Watch now. Um, but originally I had this. So I'm gonna keep it in my bag just in case. You know, some instructors really don't care what watch you have, but if they want me to have like a regular watch, I'm gonna keep it in my bag. And then in the front here, I have this little pouch. I think I'm gonna, uh, in the front of this, I have this little, what is this called? Little clip? I have this clip. So I might clip my keys on here so that we can all stay in one place. But maybe not because it's like right in front of my bag, but I don't know. I also have this little notebook, um, to write little notes on. So I'm gonna actually put this in here just in case. You know, sometimes instructors provide you with like paper or what they want you to write on. But I'm just gonna take it just in case. I'm gonna bring my handy dandy Air Flies because we need these at all times. My wallet, but I think I'm just gonna put my cards in my little key pouch, um, to make that much easier on myself. But yeah, this is my clinical bag. I will put the name on the screen because right now I don't know what the name of this bag is, but it is by These. I get a lot of, I think I'm saying that right, These. Um, I get a lot of questions about this bag. That's what I keep in my clinical bag, y'all. So yeah. Hey y'all, it is the next day, the next morning. I'm up bright and early, ready for our first day of clinical for the fourth semester, wearing my uniform. I'm really just, I'm not wearing the top. I'm wearing the jacket. And then these new Jogger scrub pants. Don't really like Jogger scrub pants. Um, I think I like the little wide leg, like actual flare-out pants look. But this is what we're going with today, okay? All black, black headband, all black head to toe. So yeah, this is what we're wearing. Um, I did a light beat on the face, you know, just to make myself look like something for Thursday. Um, I'm probably gonna leave my camera here because I don't think I can record anything, um, because I'm gonna be working at a school, kids and stuff like that. So no, man. When we crossing that boundary, but wanted to check in with you guys, show y'all that I'm ready. Handy dandy bag is packed and we're ready to go. But yeah, y'all, we're about to head out. So hey, um, wanted to check in. Clinical is going well. Did a little tour of the school and whatnot. Um, but yeah, my day's pretty, been pretty good so far. So it's currently like 11, 11 o'clock. I'm gonna leave around 2. So yeah, I would try, again with y'all when I get home. Hey girl, hey, we are back home. As you can see, I've changed my clothes. I was gonna get in the shower and do all that, but y'all, we're about to go to the gym real quick. We already been doing some things. Um, like walking obviously today, but I just wanna go walk, get right. Like I told y'all, we got a trip coming up. So I just wanna stay nice, right and tight. Um, I won't bring y'all in there with me because not that exciting. But when I come back, we will end up talking about what I did at clinical today and then we're gonna be doing some work. Alright y'all, we are post-gym. I am sweaty, baby. Like it don't even make no sense how sweaty I am. Can't really tell on the camera though. Took my sweatband off too. Mama's just trying to get right, nice, right and tight. Ah, but yeah, y'all, we are done in the gym. I had clinical today, obviously, like I've said for like the millionth time. Clinical was really nice. I'm shadowing a school nurse. She's really sweet. Um, but the first day was pretty chill. I do have that clinical again tomorrow. So pretty much gonna be the same routine. So tomorrow I won't show y'all me like before clinical and all that. But today was a really smooth day. Um, there's six hour shifts and eight equals to 12 hours because I go today and I go tomorrow. So yeah, today, first day was great. Um, six weeks. So yeah, we're gonna get this thing going, keep this thing going. Um, I just got done working out. I'm gonna need to keep my watch on because baby, I'm trying to get to these 10,000 steps. Okay. Um, but yeah, I'm about to shower, get myself cleaned up. And then we are going to do some work. I already did some discussion posts yesterday. I didn't record any of that. But we have some Kaplan work to do. So we are gonna do that today. So I will see you guys when I get out the shower. Good morning, y'all. It's Friday. It's a few days later. And yes, on this camera looking absolutely insane, but it's Friday. I didn't chat with y'all in two days, really like in a day. I didn't record anything yesterday. I had my second clinical and the day was pretty smooth. I came back home and I literally did absolutely nothing. I don't know if it's like, this senioritis is probably really hitting me. But we're almost to the finish line. So we just gotta dug it out, y'all. I'm at a Zoom meeting this morning. Um, I attended that. They've given us our pending date and you know, all of our like information and stuff like that. So, um, I joined that this morning. I completed two, well, a discussion post that I had to do and I need to upload my hours log for my clinical from Wednesday and Thursday. So that's actually what I'm gonna scan and upload now. But I did my Q Bank, um, what was that on Tuesday? But we have another Kaplan practice questions thing we have to do. So we're gonna be doing that today. So I was like, let me actually like, you know, record, show y'all. Let's do this, this work. But we are doing it from inside the house because I literally don't feel like doing or going anywhere. Um, after I had that Zoom meeting, I did go to Chick-fil-A and I got Chick-fil-A breakfast. I've really been doing good with like my eating. So I was just like, oh yeah, why not? I had a free spicy chicken biscuit. So I was like, yeah, let's get up, let's do this. But enough with my rambling. Let's get started with doing this Kaplan work. I also did take off my nails. I'm not gonna get my nails done until we go on our trip. Speaking of trip, my fashion over package came in yesterday. I just got it this morning. So yeah, we need to try on our clothes and make sure we're getting this body nice, right and tight for our trip, okay? But like I said, let's focus on the nail and let's do these practice questions. Alright y'all, we made it to question 70. And we have 19 minutes left. And of course, my last question would be a case study, like, really, the last question. Uh, but the good thing with this, we only have to remediate the questions we got wrong. So we're gonna see how we did once I read through this. And, um, we'll remediate those. And then that will really complete all the work that I had to get done for this week, which I'm really happy about because I have clinical tomorrow. I start my first preceptorship clinical. And I wanted to like have all this done and over with. So I could just focus on that and not have to think about, oh, after I get done with clinical, after a 12-hour shift, I have to do work. So glad we're getting this done today. I also need to try on those clothes and I need to empty out my luggages because I have yet to do that. And yeah, I've kind of been procrastinating on that because what I think I'm gonna do is empty out my luggages and then figure out what I'm taking on my trip and start just packing it out because that week is gonna be a very busy week for me. So I'd rather just start earlier. I'd rather just start earlier than later. So yeah, I'll let you guys know how we did on this when I finished the question. Alright y'all, we took an hour and eight minutes to do this. It was 70 questions. And I got a 78% of the points earned. So not terrible. Um, I'm gonna go back through these and remediate the ones that I got wrong and see what, you know what they say, they have like yellow benchmarked, um, questions where you earned like points um, on the ones that you selected that are correct. But I'm not sure if we have to remediate those or not, but I'm going to just in case because they're in the yellow range. So it's like I didn't completely get it right. So I just wanna make sure I do those. For example, like this is, this is an example of like one of the questions. So I earned two out of the three points. I got two correct, but I got zero incorrect because I didn't select a incorrect answer. And it allows me to see the explanation here and see, it gives you the rationale for like why it's correct. Yeah. So that's what we're about to do right now. I will probably check back in with y'all when I'm unpacking my clothes. Someone actually asked me to go through that. And I don't know if I'm gonna do that in this video or do that when it comes time to my trip about how I pack and all that stuff. But I will just check in with y'all later. Good morning, y'all. It is Saturday. Happy Saturday. We are headed to our preceptorship. Put my hair in this cute little pony. I haven't put my hair in a ponytail this entire time that I've had it really. Um, so I got ready. I just did my brows and put some concealer on and some lip balm. That's literally it. Um, but yeah, we are ready for clinical, y'all. 12-hour shift today. First day at the hospital. So let's hope that it's a good one. I might stop by McDonald's just to get a hash brown, just so I can have something on my stomach this morning. So we're about to go try to do that. The hospital is not far from my house. So that's great as well. But yeah, y'all, I'm about to put on my shoes and we're about to head out. But I'm gonna actually bring you guys, bring my camera to sign because yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna go to McDonald's before we go. So yeah, let's go. When I tell y'all it is raining and ugly, when I tell y'all it is raining and ugly outside, it is raining and ugly. Like I know I be saying it, but today is like actually raining. But I already put my order in for my hash brown. So it should be quick and no one's in the line. So that's a good thing. Yes, I have a, um, mobile order. It's PM 06. Thank you. Alright y'all, we have our hash browns. Sorry if y'all are wiggly. I'm going to try to drive, you know, as best as possible. So y'all don't fall. Um, I gotta turn now. I can't even, can't even bite into my hash brown yet. Mm, it's super hot, which I expected it to be because this is Sam. And nobody was in line. Yesterday, excuse me, yesterday, we cleaned up the house, pretty much did a Sunday reset on Friday because I knew I had a 12-hour clinical today. And I think I might work tomorrow as well. We'll see how I'm feeling after today. I just did pretty much a Sunday reset in my house, put all my clothes away that were in my luggages. I had so many clothes and so many things that I brought with me over time. It didn't make any sense. So I'm glad I got all that out the way. I also did my, um, closet a little bit, bathroom, all that stuff. So we'll probably chat with y'all when we get to the hospital. Oh, we're here, y'all. Sorry that is dark as heck in here, but we're here. We're about to get out the car, finishing this little bit of my half round. We're in ghost. I'm gonna talk to you guys when we get done. That dingy out here, I've been hearing it all day, literally all day. But we are on break. We have our food that we made yesterday. But I have break till 1:15. So I'm chilling. Today's been pretty cool, pretty slow, honestly, but still a cool day so far. Waiting for that 7:00 PM, even though it won't be directly at 7:00 PM. But yeah, today's been a pretty good day so far. Um, just wanted to check in with you guys and then I will talk to you guys when I get home. Hey y'all, we are on our way home. Had to make a stop at Ecuador to get me some food because I'm actually hungry. Like you really don't realize doing a 12-hour shift, like, okay, I ate at like 12, but baby, I'm hungry. That was seven hours ago. I need to eat again. I need to eat again. Today was a pretty smooth day. Um, it was kind of boring though, like I'm not gonna lie. Literally the time felt like it was going so slow. It had me contemplating if I even wanna come tomorrow, but like I'm gonna come. Tomorrow's Mother's Day. I don't have nothing else to do. I'm not at home with my family. So I'm gonna go. But today was so boring. I'm praying that tomorrow is better, maybe a little bit more going on, maybe a little bit more for me to do. Cause today was not giving that. But I will probably end this vlog off when I officially get home because today is Saturday and I wanna drop this tomorrow. So, um, Um I will just talk to you guys when we get to the house. Hey y'all, we are back home. I showered and everything, I'm ready to eat my food. I typically don't eat after. Seven, no, let's really be honest, I typically don't eat after like five o'clock. If I'm being honest. But like I said, I ate seven hours ago, like. And I don't know if my Qdoba is gonna be hitting like I usually do, cause I usually order online and I went there in person and I never do that. It still looks good though. Doesn't look appealing on camera, but it looks good for me. Um let me get my poppy. We're about to end this video here, y'all, because y'all spent the whole week with me and if you made it this far in the vloggy vlog. Comment clinical, cause that's what we was doing all week, clinical, clinical, clinical. So yeah, comment clinical, let me know, did y'all start? Y'all next semester of nursing school or of school period, if you taking summer classes. I know a lot of y'all might be on break, you know? A lot of y'all got that freedom. I don't, not yet, but. Yeah, like I said, today was pretty chill. I'm gonna go back tomorrow and hopefully the day is a little bit more productive. That's the word we're gonna use. And yeah, I'm about to eat my food. And yeah, I'm, I will see you guys in the next weekly vlog. Make sure you like, comment and subscribe.